Gracias a todos por venir esta noche. Este es un gran evento. Así que creo que debemos darle un aplauso. Estamos aquí esta noche en conjunto con el Comité de la Comunidad 2 de Manhattan y el Comité de Acción Política de la Escuela Pública. Mi nombre es Brad Hoileman y soy el presidente del Comité de la Comunidad 2. Y he sido acompañado en el escenario por mis compañeros de mi comité, los más importantes de ellos son los líderes de organización desde el punto de vista del Comité para este evento, que va a describir a ustedes el pensamiento del Comité sobre la unión de fuerzas con los defensores de los padres sobre este increíble problema de la sobrecarga escolar. Su nombre es Keen Burger. Sí, absolutamente. Ella es un líder de larga vida en educación en nuestro vecindario. Ella es la ex presidenta del Comité escolar de la Comunidad 2 en Manhattan. Ella es la líder del distrito democrática. Ella es una intelectual pública. Ella es una de esas raras servantes públicas que en realidad tiene un doctorado asociado a su nombre. Y lo más importante, ella es el padre orgulloso de tres, cuatro graduados de escuela pública. Así que voy a pasar el micrófono a Keen ahora mismo. Ella va a presentar los miembros del comité y describir a ustedes lo que estamos tratando de lograr esta noche. Keen.
Bien, estoy muy feliz de estar aquí. Y lo que la gente dice en el escenario es parte del Comité de Servicios Sociales y Educación, que es un comité del Comité de la Comunidad 2. Tenemos a Vern Frye, tenemos a Rhea Thader, tenemos a Steve Ashkenazi y a Lisa Conestraji. Hay dos más miembros que van a unirnos. Tienen a Dela Jones y Wendy Schlosser. Pero lo que ustedes deben saber es que este evento provino de la comunidad. Que había, sí. Hubo padres que vinieron a nuestro comité hace dos meses y dijeron que realmente necesitábamos de una escuela. Y dijimos, bueno, ¿qué hacemos si esto sucede aquí? Lo hemos estado trabajando para tener este evento. Esta noche es la noche donde hablamos del problema. Un mes después, el 19 de febrero, en un grupo mucho más pequeño, nosotros y el comité estamos tratando de encontrar la solución. Pero esto empieza la pelota. Y creo que es dentro del alcance de la posibilidad de que en un año o dos o tres tendremos una nueva escuela primaria, una nueva escuela secundaria y una nueva escuela secundaria en este vecindario. La otra cosa que ustedes podrían saber es que el presidente de esta reunión, Brad Hoileman, no solo es el presidente del Comité de la Comunidad 2, sino también me ha designado para esta posición. Pero él es mi co-líder, mi co-districtor aquí. Así que trabajamos bien juntos y estoy emocionada de que él sea el que diga que el tiempo está acabado. Porque tenemos que ser muy rápidos para escuchar a todas las personas que queremos escuchar. Lo cual incluye a muchas personas en el público que han inscrito. Así que sin más, Brad.
Gracias, Keen. Así que empecemos. Saben, hay algunas estadísticas realmente sorprendentes sobre la sobrecarga escolar en nuestro área de la Comunidad 2, que creo que merecen repetirlo muy brevemente. PS41, un 112% de sobrecapacidad. PS3, un 102% de capacidad. Baruch, un 128% de capacidad. PS234, un 139% de capacidad. Va yendo más y más. Pero estamos tratando esta noche de poner una cara humana y una voz a muchas de estas estadísticas. Así que la primera persona que me gustaría presentar, que creo que va a establecer el tono, es quien entiendo que es un orador extremadamente eloquente, muy conocedor, profundamente aprendiendo en el sistema escolar público, un filósofo de su tiempo, Evan Neiden.
Un problema matemático. Si construyes 500 apartamentos y cada una de esas personas tiene un hijo cada uno, ¿cuántos hijos tendrías?
No, pero gracias. ¿Hace uno?
¿Hace uno?
¿Dos?
Sí, eso es correcto. Así que aquí está la expresión matemática. Escuelas que ya están llenas más con muchos nuevos apartamentos iguala que necesitamos más escuelas.
Veo a Evan en Capitol Hill en no mucho tiempo. Este es un mensaje que resonará. Muchas gracias, Evan. Y quiero presentar brevemente a los tres defensores de los padres que han hecho un trabajo tan tremendo en unir este evento con el Comité de la Comunidad 2. Si pudieran solo estar y ser reconocidos, Irene Hoffman y Kelberg y Tamara Rowe. Nuestro enfoque y activismo de ellos son increíblemente inspiradores. Así que gracias por traernos en este importante proyecto. Así que el orador primero que nos gustaría presentar es Michael Evans. Y Annette Evans está hablando también. Está bien.
Hola, soy Michael Evans, de 7º grado de Hola, soy Michael Evans, de 7º grado de la escuela secundaria de la L.A. y graduada de la escuela primaria de PS41. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la sobrecarga en las escuelas públicas del vecindario. Las clases sobrecargadas en las escuelas tienen oportunidades y tiempo de aprendizaje fuera de los niños. Hay menos uno a uno para los niños que necesitan ayuda extra y así algunos niños se quedan atrás. Las clases sobrecargadas estresan a los profesores y hacen que sea difícil para ellos hacer su trabajo. Estos estresan a los niños y a los profesores y no resuelven el problema. Este problema debe ser abordado. Gracias.
Gracias, Evans.
Hola, soy Annette Evans y ese es mi hijo, Michael. Solo quiero darles un poco de nuestra experiencia en la 41, que es una escuela fabulosa. En 2000 hubo un subsidio estatal destinado a reducir la tamaño de las clases en K a 3. Y fuimos afortunados porque Michael estaba en una clase de 19 estudiantes. Y fuimos realmente agradecidos porque esa fue una de mis principales preocupaciones al enviarlo a una escuela pública. Pero luego descubrí que había un niño en su clase que estaba comportando desapercibido y inapropiado. Estaba sentado en la mesa de Michael. Luego de eso, se supo que este niño tenía una historia de violencia doméstica. Fui a observar la clase. El profesor se manejó con energía, vigilancia y humanidad la situación, socializando al niño y protegiendo a los otros estudiantes en el aula. También tenía un niño en la clase que no hablaba inglés y usó su único año de español para comunicarse con él. Y adivinen qué? Fue un año exitoso para todos los niños. Me dijo que su experiencia con sólo 19 niños en el aula era totalmente diferente al año pasado cuando tenía 25. Ni imaginé dónde se hubiera puesto seis niños adicionales en ese aula. También confidió que no podía creer cuán inteligentes eran estos niños porque podía impulsarlos adelante y cubrir mucho más material que la clase que tenía con 25. Pensé que con menos niños y menos problemas disciplinales a tratar, podía enfocarse más en educar a los niños y los niños tenían más tiempo para dormir. Pensé que obtuve su tiempo también. De todos modos, no fue tan exitoso en el tercer grado. Tenía un profesor muy dedicado que cuando estaba en el kindergarten tenía 19 niños, pero tenía una clase de 28. Teníamos muchos problemas disruptivos. Volvieron con dolores de estómago, su amigo Anne volvió con migrantes. No estuvo bien en el examen estatal, tuvimos que remediarlo con él. Y en el cuarto grado lo hizo mejor. En el cuarto y quinto grado había 32 clases, se sintió estresado y se cansó al final del día. Y tenía 35 niños en su clase de sexto grado y todavía tenía los mismos problemas, aunque está en un entorno académico selectivo. El problema no se aleja. El tamaño de las clases importa. Ya en las escuelas de Nueva York superan el estándar estatal. 22 estudiantes en un aula. Las escuelas públicas de Nueva York estallan en la escena y pasan su capacidad para acomodar y optimizar la educación de nuestros niños. Y mientras que hay un problema de sobrecarga ahora mismo, hay un desastre de sobrecarga en el futuro con una proyectada de un aumento del 18.2% de niños en nuestro vecindario. Estamos en el proceso de sobrecarga en las escuelas públicas, que debe ser abordada inmediatamente y repitida. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Bien, bien. Bienvenidos. Sé que estamos Estamos emocionados de estar aquí. Creo que deberíamos hablar separadamente un poco más tarde, pero solo quiero decir que la presencia y la organización de este evento con la comunidad juntándose entre diferentes escuelas y de diferentes organizaciones es realmente impresionante. Y es solo, gracias a los padres por organizar esto, es realmente increíble.
Gracias. Para presentar al vicepresidente de la ciudadanía, Rose Pierre-Louis.
Buenas tardes a todos. El presidente de la ciudadanía no podría estar aquí esta noche y extiende sus resentimientos. Pero primero déjame comenzar diciendo gracias a Keen Burger, a Brad Hoileman y al Comité de la Comunidad 2 por organizar este escenario y a todos los padres aquí esta noche. Muchos de ustedes han llamado a nuestra oficina y comunicado sus preocupaciones sobre la sobrecarga. Quiero que sepan que el presidente de la ciudadanía comparte sus preocupaciones y está junto a ustedes en su Y en toda la ciudad, estamos escuchando a los padres todos los días que la sobrecarga es un problema. Creo que Manhattan representa lo que ha estado pasando en términos de desarrollo y crecimiento en Nueva York. Lo que tenemos que hacer, lo que tenemos que pedir al DOE a hacer es desarrollar una estrategia comprensiva para lidiar con la sobrecarga en nuestras comunidades. Porque sabemos que la sobrecarga no proporciona un entorno conducive para que nuestros niños aprendan. Han aprendido de la Comunidad 1, que tenía un problema similar, que a través de la construcción de la coalición y el trabajo con los comités de la comunidad y lo más importante, los padres y los niños, que podemos abordar esta situación y ellos fueron capaces de conseguir una escuela para abordar la sobrecarga. Así que quiero que sepan que el presidente de la ciudadanía y yo, Hunter Johansson, que muchos de ustedes conocen, es el liaison del presidente de la ciudadanía. Que trabajaremos con ustedes para abordar este problema y que tenemos que想 que tenemos que llegar a un plan y que tenemos que pedir a la ciudad a llegar a un plan que no solo aborde la sobrecarga en esta comunidad, sino que desarrolle un plan para abordar esto como ciudad. Muchas gracias.
Hay un organizador de tradición en el Consejo de la Ciudad que representa al East Village, que está con nosotros esta noche. Y creo que ella puede decirnos, ella puede ayudarnos con el mapa de ruta en esa área probablemente mejor que apenas nadie. Así que es mi placer presentar al miembro del consejo, Rosie Mendez.
Wow, con una introducción así. Gracias, Brad, y gracias a todos por estar aquí hoy. Solo para decirles que desde K hasta 12, un estudiante de escuela pública, un proud graduate de escuela pública. Y en los años 19, bueno, no vamos a ir atrás. Pero cuando estaba en la escuela primaria, muy atrás en el día, teníamos sobrecarga. Estaba siendo un problema desde hace décadas y ahora no hemos podido resolverlo. Y creo que es en falta de voluntad política. En los años 1970, le dimos un descuento a los desarrolladores si querían construir edificios. Bueno, no pusimos ninguna condición en eso. Años después, pusimos algo de vivienda asequible. Podíamos, como comunidad unida, cuando se construyen los desarrollos, pedir que se hagan instalaciones especiales de comunidad, particularmente cuando están construyendo y va a aumentar la infraestructura. Y en el Comité de la Comunidad 6, estamos haciendo un rezonamiento y es parte de, en realidad, el Comité escolar 2. La forma en que se hace el Comité escolar 2 es extrañamente. Y esperamos que vamos a conseguir una escuela pública. El desarrollador ha indicado que finalmente, después de años de negociaciones, van a poner una escuela pública allí. No hemos sacado todos los detalles. Sería en la 1ª Avenida, en algún lugar entre la 35ª y la 38ª. Había varios acres de los que hablábamos. Y es por el lado de mi distrito, pero está en el distrito de Dango Rotten y hemos estado trabajando en eso. Así que estas son algunas de las herramientas que están disponibles para nosotros en el gobierno, con la comunidad cuando vamos a si vemos sitios de desarrollo, que muchos de esos sitios están desapareciendo ahora, ponemos condiciones sobre los comités públicos que necesitamos en este distrito. Así que gracias. Y solo quiero agregar, saben, trabajar, trabajo muy de cerca con mi mi orador, Tristine Quinn, esta ha sido una de sus prioridades, que ella está centrada en los oradores, empezando más UPK y tratando de reducir el tamaño de las clases. Así que es algo que nosotros en el Consejo de la Ciudad, junto con el presidente de la educación, Robert Jackson, que estamos enfocados en.
Muchas gracias. Seguimos escuchando a la defensora pública de la ciudad, que ha gastado un buen poquito de su plazo y medio en el tema de la escuela pública y ha publicado un informe y está trabajando de cerca con los padres de todo el país sobre este problema en sí. Betsy Gompf.
Tengo un trabajo que hacer, pero tengo que estar en algún lugar porque saben que son muy importantes. Pero no tengo suficiente para esta increíble multitud. Qué gran trabajo hizo alguien de organizar esto. Vamos a empezar por decir que todos sabemos que la sobrecarga es un problema enorme. Y también sabemos por qué, porque el Departamento de Educación está miscalculando la forma en que ven las clases. Y creo que eso es algo que probablemente todos ustedes saben. Cuando miras una escuela y pones a los niños en un laboratorio y luego haces la calculación total que cuenta los niños en el laboratorio como la capacidad de esa escuela, eso es incorrecto. Pero hay algo diferente, más importante, creo, que está sucediendo. Porque la fórmula, mi entendimiento, está cambiando. Y muchos de ustedes probablemente están trabajando muy duro para asegurarse de que la fórmula que ha cambiado está implementada. Sé que el consejo está trabajando duro en eso y sé que muchas personas lo hacen. Pero lo que realmente me preocupa, y nuevamente, no sé los números en Manhattan porque tengo un poco de excusa, represento a toda la ciudad. Pero hace unos tres años, encontré en el Bronx un problema muy interesante. Entré a una escuela, una escuela llamada DeWitt Clinton. Realmente encontré mi escuela en el Bronx. La primera vez que fui fue bastante fácil caminar por las calles. Realmente buenos niños, divertidos, pasaron un buen tiempo. Hace un año después, caminé por las calles, fue muy difícil caminar. Y la tercera vez que caminé, literalmente no podía caminar por las calles de esa escuela. La sobrecarga fue tan extraordinaria. Ahora déjenme decirles qué pasó y es algo que creo que todos tenemos que ver muy cuidadosamente. Especialmente en lugares donde hay grandes escuelas secundarias, pero donde hay escuelas secundarias y escuelas primarias. Y eso es los más pequeñas escuelas que se construyen. Y saben que las escuelas pequeñas son ahora el tipo de mes. En DeWitt Clinton, lo que pasó fue que muchos de los muy grandes escuelas se dividieron en escuelas pequeñas. Cuatro academias, cinco academias, Theodore Roosevelt. Pero, ¿qué pasó con los niños que no iban a las escuelas pequeñas? Esos niños fueron derramados en lugares como DeWitt Clinton. Y lo que pasa es que la sobrecarga es tan extraordinaria, olviden el tamaño de las clases. Y lady, ¿dónde está la? ¿Ley de aquí? El tamaño de las clases importa, pero cuando tienes una situación como esa, no hay posibilidad de tener un tamaño de clase decente. Así que necesitamos ser muy vigilantes sobre eso. Necesitamos ser muy vigilantes sobre tus escuelas secundarias en Manhattan y en todo el área, pero especialmente sobre tus escuelas y tu escuela primaria. Porque es algo que temo que puede venir. Así que mi compromiso con ustedes es que ayudaré de cualquier manera que pueda para asegurar que eso no suceda. Y solo una cosa que tengo aquí, los tarjetas a nuestro sitio web. He creado una comisión, me han pedido por el presidente de la Asamblea Estatal del Comité de Educación, Kathy Nolan, para crear una comisión para ver la gobernanza de las escuelas. Y hemos creado un sitio web y les daré a la gente aquí y a aquellos de ustedes que quieran tomarlo. Por favor, mirenlo. Lo que estamos haciendo es pedir a la comunidad que nos dé saber lo que la comunidad piensa de la gobernanza de las escuelas. Y verán que tengo algunos documentos académicos ahí. Tenemos mucho comentario ya de varias personas que han venido e han sido entrevistadas. Anya que quiera ser entrevistada debe decirnos. Estamos viendo el problema porque en 2009, la gobernanza de las escuelas, el problema de control mayoral, se decidirá por la Asamblea. Y tal vez Deborah Blake, tu hermosa mujer de la Asamblea, les hablará un poco de eso. Pero vendrá por, va a ser el sol, la ley va a ser el sol. Y estamos tratando de hacer recomendaciones a la legislatura sobre lo que debería pasar. Así que es realmente importante, particularmente para este problema, que la gente nos dé saber lo que están pensando, qué son sus recomendaciones y qué creen que debe hacer. Así que nuevamente, es la comisión de la gobernanza de las escuelas. Tienes mi compromiso, que es algo que es realmente importante, no solo para mí, sino para toda la gobernanza. Y gracias nuevamente por tu gran evento y que tengas un buen día.
Primero de todo, les deseo a todos un feliz y saludable año nuevo. Esta es una gran multitud. Y estoy totalmente agradecida de tener la oportunidad de representar a una comunidad que es tan involucrada, involucrada y comprometida con buenas políticas públicas. Sé que Rosie Mendez mencionó que fue una graduada de escuela pública. Y yo también, era un niño de escuela pública de Nueva York. Y continué eso en la universidad. Así que fui a CUNY y soy un proud graduate de CUNY. Y creo que realmente no hay nada más esencial para nuestra democracia que tener todo tipo de niños que vayan a la escuela juntos a lo largo de su vida. Ahora, como todos saben, no pasará por una cantidad de historia, pero la campaña para este electo durante los años de Pataki fue una y otra vez en los tribunales y ignorada y reclamada repetidamente por George Pataki. La mayoría de la Asamblea, de las que soy un miembro orgulloso, insistió consistentemente en el principio de que la fórmula de financiación para nuestras escuelas estaba completamente fuera de la tabla y necesitaba ser abordada. Y estamos realmente contentos de que el año pasado comenzamos en el lado de la operación para abordar esa ineficiencia. Pero el año anterior comenzamos en el lado capital porque no se puede reducir el tamaño de las clases a menos que tengas otras salas en las que las escuelas Ahora, en advance de esta reunión,核 checked con Ways and Means, que son nuestros asambleas de captares, y fueron sorprendidas de que no hubiera un gran aumento este año y el año pasado en la solicitud de la ciudad de construir ayuda porque desde su punto de vista nunca se recibe, así que por qué no pedirlo. Y creo que hay una diferencia filosófica entre nosotros en esta sala y los gente de Tweed. Pero primero de todo, no creo que realmente necesiten reducir el tamaño de las clases. Pero incluso más básico que eso, no creo que crean en la educación pública. No creo que crean que si eres de clase media o de clase media superior que deberías tener a tus hijos en una escuela pública. Creen que deberías pagar en una escuela privada. Y así nunca, jamás van a mover para aumentar el número de escuelas o salas a menos que sean badgers y, por así decirlo, golpeados para hacer eso. El miembro del consejo de Allen Burson, a la izquierda de nosotros, tiene una ley que diría que si estás construyendo requiriendo la planificación de la ciudad para requerir más escuelas que se construyan, estamos mirando qué carretilla o tijera podemos usar para insistir que mientras las edificaciones residenciales continúan siendo construidas en tamaños que francamente son apalzantes, que haya algo más que tenga que ver con eso. El estado probablemente tiene algunas propiedades alrededor de la ciudad que comenzarán a ver como underutilizadas y están buscando obtener algunos recursos de ellas. Y he tenido conversaciones con ellos que son francamente sobre cualquier lugar donde haya exceso propiedad estatal, ya sea vendido para desarrollo o ya sea reutilizado de alguna manera, alguna parte de esos edificios debe, debe contener espacio escolar. Vamos de vuelta a ustedes para respaldarnos. Hemos tenido una breve conversación con alguien en la administración, la administración estatal, pero solo tenemos breves discusiones si estamos afortunados. Y dijeron, bueno, la ciudad, la ciudad tiene toda esta ayuda de construcción, saben, ¿por qué viene a nosotros? Y dije, tienes que entender que esos edificios, sean ciudadanos o propiedad estatal, son propiedad de los contribuyentes del estado de Nueva York. Como un título de ciudad o un título de estado, que esos son los activos nuestros. Y tenemos el derecho de determinar lo que pasa con ellos. Y les sugiero que eso es igualmente cierto, ya sea que estén en el lado de la autopista de la izquierda o en el otro lado de la autopista de la izquierda. Así que tenemos una tarea ante nosotros. Sé que la defensora pública plantea el problema de la gobernanza. Eso vendrá en medio de una elección, una elección miserable aquí en 2009. Sé lo que pienso, pero también sé que la política de eso será muy difícil. Ponemos las cosas a la luz hasta el sol, pero incluso si las cosas no funcionan perfectamente bien, hay inercia. Y las cosas que están en movimiento tienden a mantenerse en movimiento, física básica. Así que si en realidad queremos cambiar el curso de gobernanza, mucho trabajo tendrá que ser hecho en advance. Así que, saben, mi sentimiento personal es que el maestro y el senador de la escuela, y espero no ofender a los abogados antitrust en la audiencia, pero cuando pienso en educación y pienso en senador, líder, abogado antitrust, pero claro. and I think chancellor, leader, antitrust lawyer, but of course. So when I think education, I think educator. I think somebody who is committed to and has an understanding of that as well. I am not willing to let a mayor who only then has a chancellor, who only has to make one person happy, that has not, I believe, and I will submit to you, has not been to the benefit of the system. And the children, most importantly. Because as much as the parents vote, I really care most about, of future generations, the kids. I got a great education, I wanna see every kid reach their full potential. So educators should be in charge of education, not the determining. So, one thing I would suggest is that the State Health Commissioner has to be a doctor. It's, no, it's in law. And there was a big problem that we asked, you know, we couldn't get a doctor to actually wanna be State Commissioner, because $95,000, it's a tough sell. So, we put that in statute. I would suggest to you that whether it's the state or the city, we have to come together to ensure that the next chancellor is an educator by statute. Thank you very much.
My mom asked me if I'd be nervous speaking in front of large groups of people, but I told her that I'm used to it. Oh, shit. My mom asked me if I'd be nervous speaking in front of large groups of people, but I told her that I'm used to it because I usually do a fart in front of my class. At my old school, there were fifteen kids in my class. At PS3, there were twenty-seven. I don't mind this because it's easier to make friends with our stuff in case of choose. Actually, I like it, but I also love computer and movement classrooms. If we added more kids and closed those rooms, then we couldn't do computer or movement in our classroom anymore. Finally, I sound very proud when I go to lunch. If we added more kids, it'd be close to impossible to get lunch. Please make sure we can still do computers, movement, and eat lunch every day. Thank you.
This is a young man who clearly has his priorities in order. Thank you, Max, that was excellent. We're gonna hear now from Speaker Quinn's District Chief of Staff. The Council Speaker could not be here this evening, so she sent Kate Seeley-Kirk, who is her District Chief of Staff. Kate?
The Speaker regrets that she can't make it tonight. She did want me to thank King Burger, Brad Wellman, and Community Board Two for all of their hard work putting this together. Amazing. When the Speaker first took office, she wanted to address problems facing our middle schools. Everyone that she talked to, she was hearing the same thing. If you wanna improve middle schools, you have to invest in full day pre-K. One problem is that most pre-K is half-day, and that's a problem for a couple of reasons. First, four-year-olds are slow, so by the time they're done taking off their coats, going to the bathroom, and eating their snacks, it's time to go. Second, if kids are in school for half the day, someone has to be watching them for the other half, which presents a difficult situation for our working parents. So we've been working hard to add more full-day pre-K slots. To date, we've added nearly 3,500 new full-day programs over the past two years. We've got a long way to go, but the progress we've made isn't worth it. Years down the road, thousands of kids will be in a better place because of universal pre-K, but thousands of students are in school right now that have never had pre-K, and we're losing too many in tough years between elementary and high schools. So this is why the Speaker worked with her colleagues at the Council and convened a middle school task force. They've created a set of feasible, concrete steps that the city can take to address our schools' most urgent needs. A few examples of that are increasing professional development opportunities, school mentoring, additional lead teachers, citywide professional development center, expansion of partnerships with community-based youth development organizations. This is significant because the ideas are being implemented quickly by the Department of Education. Some of the recommendations are already being put into place, including appointing a Director of Middle Schools Initiative, responsible for coordinating citywide middle school efforts and implementing task force recommendations, making sure that all middle grade schools have access to region's level classes by the year 2010, and putting a $5 million recurring fund in place to be used by the fifty highest-need schools to implement the task force recommendation that they think would work best with their schools. Now, a lot of what we're hearing about today is class size. Not long ago, the city scored a tremendous victory, winning a favorable outcome in the campaign for fiscal equity. We're working to make sure the governor falls through on his commitment to provide billions of dollars for New York City schools, much of which is earmarked to be used to reduce class size. We also recognize that the first steps towards dealing with overcrowding is to have accurate data on class sizes throughout the city. The Council's previously passed legislation requiring the Department of Education to make that information available to parents, and we've been working with the Class Size Working Group to ensure that data is easy to understand and accurately reflects the number of students in each individual classroom. This information will help us determine how best to allocate our resources. Now, dealing with the realities of overcrowding in our council district here, the Speaker has been working with principals and the Department of Education and the School Construction Authority to identify ways to improve our school buildings that we are stuck with, as great as they are. There's, there's a lot that needs to be worked. So in the past few years, the Speaker is proud that she's been able to fund, and just within the schools that are participating in tonight's events, a rooftop playground, renovated bathrooms, air-conditioned units, laptop units, and auditorium renovation. So, we would love to keep you in the loop. I have some cards here, and we'd love to hear from you. You can also go to the Council website, but I would love to hear from you, and I'll be here, so thank you very much.
What grade are you in? Could you tell us?
I'm in seventh grade.
Woo-hoo! You're in third, and how old?
Eight, seven.
Okay. Let's, let's hear what Andrew said.
I love the history, but we need to make a few changes. Imagine if thirty kids were playing with a hundred toys in your living room. That is what it is like in our classroom every day. And I bet Jenny's dance class would not fit in our classroom because there would not be any room to move around, and we would crush into each other trying to dance around. I would have thirty more, thirty kids in my class because there is more people to help you and you later. But the bad part about having thirty in your class is that it is too crowded.
PS3 is a great school, but we need more space and less kids in a class. Our classroom has thirty, thirty kids, and we only have one teacher, and it's hard for her, and she can't give us the attention we really need. Our classroom needs more space to store stuff. In our classroom, we have boxes stacked on top of boxes. It's really fantastic to go to the music room or dance room because you have more space for the activity. I can't imagine Jackie bringing all of her books up to our classroom, or Bruce bringing all his history. Sometimes it's good to have thirty kids in your class because you make more friends, but sometimes it's hard to think when it's not you and her.
Good evening. I've taken my job tonight. Max and Kevin and Juliana, you're up. We at the School of Construction Authority have issued all sorts of stats, statistics, and we issue our capital plan, and every year we reissue the capital plan because we make amendments to the capital plan, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight. We wanna listen, to hear what they have to say. Tonight, joining me, and I think she just had to leave a second ago, was Liz Burger. Liz is the Senior Director of the Capital Planning Division, the School Construction Authority. I have from Division of School Facilities, Mr. Jim Tocales. Jim is the Space Planner for this verbal class. So we're very, very interested to hear exactly what they have to say. We acknowledge that the district is growing, has grown, and will continue to grow. We have, in our last set of recommendations, the last time we looked at this, we issued a report that suggested the district would need about 3,100 new seats. We have cited several new buildings in the district. PS151, which is actually MS114, East Side Middle is going in there. PS59, as you know, we're aggressively working, you may not know, so maybe I should explain this to you, but we're aggressively looking for different sites. We aggressively work with developers. And right now, up on 57th Street, we're working with a developer to put a new, PS59 and Art Design High School. We're doing the same thing up on 91st Street and First Avenue, where we will be, where we have already broken ground, and we will be citing the new MS114, East Side Middle School. Again, with a new, with a developer. The Beadford School is now in design. We have set aside funds for an extension on PS51. In our community, as I said, I was a member of Community Board Two, but was born a couple of blocks away from here, a parent of a public school student, I might have had to. We're looking at the Toro College site. We're looking at PS41, and we are examining PS116 to see if there are differences we can make there. So as you can see, we're not sitting idle by, pointing out guns and saying their problem doesn't exist. We acknowledge that there is an issue. We appear to listen to everything you have to say, and if, as soon as we can come up with a, with a, with a site, and as you know, I don't have to tell you, I live on Washington Street. I never dreamed I would see the kind of development that I see right around my angle. Okay? And I don't think any of us, who have more than a couple of years' experience living in this community, would ever believe that it would be possible. But it's happened, and we acknowledge it's happening, and we're working as hard as we can to, to keep up there. I don't wanna keep a lot of time, it looks like there's a lot of speakers. Mostly I wanna hear, I'm taking notes, I'm listening, I'm going back to present, who asked me to come and sit here, since I'm gonna be listening to you tonight. So thank you for having me. I'm very proud of the community, this is really pretty incredible, and thanks again.
I will not read my whole stick, and I'll put it into the record. Olivia does wanna say one thing.
It's hard for us to walk around because we have so much kids in our class. Whenever we walk, we always fall.
It's hard to be fun. I just wanna say one comment, I won't read all of this. The, the big comment I wanted to make for all of the people who may have been several years away from in school themselves, or their children long out of the system. I grew up in a class of 35 to 38, and it was bad but manageable because we were in linear seats, and learning meant sitting in your seat, listening to the teacher, writing in your notebook. If there was class discussion, it was done in those linear seats. That isn't at all what education is about, thank goodness. When my daughter Juliana said the thing about thirty kids playing with a hundred toys, they're literally working with that many things during the course of a day. We have a fantastic teacher who does project-based hands-on learning. They're building the Titanic, they're making scale models of the neighborhood, they're building a puppet theater and writing a script, and that's all at the same time. You know, they, they get to groups and, by their own interests, self-generated interests. It's a wonderful, wonderful way to learn, but it requires a little more space than a traditional classroom.
I'm just gonna keep it very brief, but it seemed to me we were talking to a few people last night, and nothing's gonna really happen unless it is, unless there's monetary incentive for it. So somehow we've gotta figure out with the people who are building the buildings, an incentive for them to help the community monetarily. They've gotta get something out of it, or we won't, I think. Then that's another issue that I'm here. And other than that, you know, thanks all for coming, and I know in my, in our class we have thirty kids, so if each of them wanna say something for thirty seconds about a project, that's fifteen minutes, and they maybe only have twelve minutes for that project, so it's, it's sort of futile. So we need some smaller sizes, we need to shave some of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burger. Here's your dreaded PowerPoint, if you wanna take a break, go right ahead and take a break. What I'm gonna do, and I don't actually know why I am here tonight, because, is this one? Bear with me for a second. My slide, oh, here we go. I was asked by Tamara Rowe, my dear friend, to do a little background on what the issues are. Now, we've been talking about the issue, but, but I just wanna give you a couple things that I found out in my brief, brief research. Here's my disclaimer, I am a parent of two children in two public schools, I've been very involved, but I'm in no way an expert in School Construction Authority, capital planning, or any of that stuff. I know what I know from doing research and talking to people, so please, don't blame me if I say something wrong, blame Tamara. Now, the School Construction Authority and the Department of Education comes up with this, what we call the Blue Book. This is the book that tells us the school capacity, utilization rates, and all that stuff about how the schools are being utilized. This, I believe, comes out every year, and it looks at pretty much every single school, and it calculates the efficiency of the space use and arrives at a number for each school. So I'm gonna briefly give you an overview of the formula that the DOE uses as best skimmed through the Blue Book introductory section. They'll look at number of instructional rooms that are being used, that's classrooms, cluster rooms, and other instructional spaces. And they will also take into consideration square footage of rooms, because certain rooms are too small to be classrooms, so they don't consider that into the calculation of the capacity. And of course, they have to consider how many students are in the school, and they will look at number of cluster rooms. Now, for those of you who are not familiar with the public school system, clusters are what we call specialized instruction, music, science, art, movement, and there are several other subject areas where teachers are hired to teach those specific subject areas. So those teachers require rooms to teach their specialized instruction, and those are called the cluster rooms. And each school is allowed a certain number of cluster rooms based on the total enrollment for the school. And we're also allowed non-instructional space. We can't run a school without administrative spaces, and libraries also not calculated into the capacity utilization rates and such. And there are various other rooms that are not taken into consideration when we're talking about efficiency of space use. And there are two different methods, and this is, I think, part of the newer revisions to the formula that somebody else referred to earlier. There is a historical method using larger class sizes, such as thirty students or thirty-three students per class for upper grades. Then there is the target method that uses class sizes of eighteen children for pre-K, twenty-four kindergarten through third grade, and twenty-eight for grades four through eight. And I'm not gonna touch on high schools, because I don't know anything about high schools, but I'm sure there is a threshold limit. And these are the class sizes that they use to calculate the target method against which your current room usage is compared. And the school capacity is expressed in percentage. So, what does that formula generate for the schools that are in Community Board Two? PS3 is at 103% or 102, I, I think it's 103 in the Blue Book, somebody said 102. PS41 at 112. PS130 is 118% capacity. Greenwich Village Middle School is at 93%, which is pretty astonishing. If anybody's gone upstairs, upstairs to look at the school, you would never think that it's under capacity. Anyway, those are the figures listed in the most current Blue Book that evaluates how... Anyway, those are the figures listed in the most current Blue Book that evaluates how the space is used in each school. Now, the DOE Blue Book from last year also mentions that some of the overcrowding has been alleviated by enrollment decline, that's what it says. I'm just quoting it, don't shoot me, I'm not saying that's true, and I'm actually going to tell you that's not really true. Now, here are some really quick and dirty demographic projections for this area. We have population growth projection of one million people added to this city by 2030, these are the statistics that the city generates. All that, school age population, that's the ages between five and seventeen, is expected to decrease citywide, but in Manhattan, it's expected to increase. So when you look at the citywide statistics, it's a little misleading, because we do live in communities, we think in terms of our own communities, so I don't really care if the school age population's going to decrease citywide, because right now, in my own neighborhood, it's increasing. And I have some graphs to show you for that, too. District Two enrollment is expected to increase by eighteen-point-five percent between 2005 and 2014, adding forty-seven hundred children. That's just in District Two. And here is some hard data, I got these enrollment data for PS-3 for the past seven years, and yes, it goes up and down a little bit, but no one can negate the general trend, it's going up. No question about that. Now, the Department of Education also plans for capital projects, that includes auditorium improvements, playground improvements, but it also includes adding new schools. So what is in the five-year plan amendment that's just reading? Well, we do have seven projects adding thirty-one-hundred, thirty-one-hundred-and-fifty seats in District Two, this is not Community Board Two, this is District Two, by 2010. None of these seats are in Community Board Two. So, let's do a little reality check. Now, DOE has all these numbers and formulas, and I think those formulas do a good job of assessing an overall citywide trend, or even maybe a borough-wide trend. But what it doesn't really do is look at what life is like inside the school. So I'm going to share some of that with you, and I have spent quite a bit of time in the classrooms, so I feel a little more comfortable talking to you about this part of it. Now, here is the quick and dirty formula versus actual numbers at PS-3. The target method for calculating our capacity is based on these class sizes. In reality, we're doing okay in pre-k, we're average, you know, one student over for pre-k, I mean, sorry, kindergarten, first grade, not that bad, but look at here. For our second and third grade classes, we are way over what the DOE considered should be the class size, and we're still only at one-hundred-and-three percent capacity. That doesn't make sense to me, we have these huge classes, but we're still just a little over capacity, it doesn't feel that way. Now, the space you're sitting in now is our auditorium, but you notice we don't have fixed chairs. That's because we actually use this space as the gymnasium for the elementary school, because the middle school uses the real gym, which by the way, looks like this, for the gym. So, okay, that could pass as a gym, but you know, I've been here for nine years, and it's just recent that I started calling this room the auditorium. Every time I think of this space, it's the gym, because I see kids running around during school days doing gym. Now, class of thirty students, I told you, it's very crowded, it really is, and like Mary so eloquently put, we don't teach our kids the way we were taught, we don't sit at desks facing the teachers, we do interactive learning. And that makes it very difficult with thirty students in crammed into little spaces. And again, these special subject areas, we have a music teacher, we have an art teacher, we have a movement teacher, computer, library, all those are wonderful specialized instructions that we have teachers for. It would be very difficult for our music teacher to bring all his instruments up and down every period, you're going to lose twenty minutes in just setting up. Or the computer, how are we going to carry all those iMacs up and down the stairs every single period? It's just not possible. Unless you want to reduce, you know, reduce your real instruction time to fifteen minutes, because you're going to be schlepping everything up and down the stairs. And for middle schools, some of the middle schools, the teachers, what we, okay, prep time, I should explain what a prep time is. Every teacher is given a period or two during the day to prepare for lessons and prepare for whatever they have to teach, those are called the prep periods. In elementary schools, teachers stay in the classrooms, and they do whatever they have to do to prepare for the day, or for the remainder of the day, for the whole week. In middle schools, it's not true for all middle schools, but in some middle schools, teachers do their prep in their own classroom, which makes sense to me, because that's where the books are, that's where the supplies are, and you want to do your lesson prep with all your materials at hand. But, according to the Blue Book formula, if you're using your middle school classroom for prep, that's underutilized, it's not efficient use of space according to the DOE. I don't know, do we have to push our teachers into the teacher's lounge for their prep, and they have to bear with the traffic going in and out, and they don't have their material at hand? Those are some issues that we have to think about. Aside from the instructional space and the efficiency of use of those instructional spaces, we also have issues of infrastructure for the whole school. Cafeteria is one of the things that we have a very hard time with, we couldn't add too many more classes, even if we had rooms, because our cafeteria can handle only so many students, as it is, and we share the school with the middle school by the way, as it is, some of the kids start lunch at ten forty. I don't have my breakfast till eleven. All right, most people have breakfast at eight, I know, but ten forty lunch, that's not lunch, that's late breakfast by most people's standards. But that's what we have to do, because we simply cannot accommodate all the children in the cafeteria at a decent lunchtime. We also have to think about things like bathrooms, even if we had room to expand, do we have enough facilities, amenities like bathrooms? We have one bathroom for teachers on each floor, just one bathroom for, you know, fifteen adults on one floor. I'm sure Department of Health probably has some regulations regarding that. So, we often say you can't see the forest for the trees, but I'm thinking the DOE has the reverse problem, it can see the forest, and it does a decent job of what the, you know, space uses, like citywide or boroughwide, but it's not seeing the trees, the individual trees or the schools. And that's what we really care about, what are the trees, here there. Schools are like trees in the forest, and there is definitely a disconnect between the DOE formula and the reality. The formula's not really capturing what we need. And I think, here's where I'm going to editorialize a little bit, we need creative thinking, we really do, and maybe somebody will address it later, but there are, I think, many, many ways to address this issue without getting stuck in the old way of thinking, we need to get out of the box and think creatively to solve this issue, and we also need to work together. And I'm really happy to see all these different schools coming together, preschools, and the Community Board, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful start. So I thank you very much, and let's move on to the next speaker.
You have to love Greenwich Village, I went to a Catholic school in Queens, you know, the other parents, they didn't really look like it. Anyway, that's why I love it, that's why I'm here. District Two has great schools, really great schools, and we are putting them at horrendous risk of destroying them by overcrowding them. Now, when I look out around, whether it's, you know, where my office is, or where I live, I see cranes all over the place, and cranes mean more development, and more development means more people, right? And you know, people, they just have this thing about having children, I don't know what it is, I tell you, even the gays and the lesbians are appropriate, that's happened. Out of control. And just as I was tired of it in town, I, you know, because you're not allowed, because there's eliminated rent protection over there, you can't get a bigger apartment if you have a child, it was like the greatest birth control ever, because, anyway, that's a different But we have not had a new school in District Two in, I don't know how long, maybe four forever, and that is totally unacceptable. And, you know, honestly, all over, certainly all over my district, overcrowding is a huge problem, but you know what? Tough. It's a huge problem in District Two, and if we don't address it now, we are going to be in even worse shape. So, really, the Department of Education has to totally focus on this issue. We have a School Construction Authority, they're supposed to be working with the Department of Education, and they should be worrying about what is happening here in our neighborhood. Now, I don't wish for more development, I'm not really so much for development, but it's going on anyway, and any chance I get, with any city agency, whether it is the Department of City Planning, or the Department of Education, I bring up to them that we cannot handle more people because we do not have the capacity now for our schools, our schools are already overcrowded. Now, I know you'll be shocked to hear this, but when I was a child, I needed a little bit of extra attention. And I did not get it, and look what happened, right? So, that we are destroying our schools by having too many children, in a ratio with teachers and other school staff, is wrong and stupid, and is going to damage the next generation. So from personal experience, I know that we need to have enough classrooms so that we can have school classes, right? And make sure the children get the attention that they need in school. Now, you know, honestly, a lot of the new development, it's not, you know, some of it, the parents there, although, you know, with the subprime mortgage and everything, they argue, they think they're going to send their kids to private schools, but they're not going to be able to afford it, and there aren't enough seats in the private schools as it is now, and those children are going to be going to public schools, and there's no room now. So, I want to absolutely commend Keen Burger for her vision on putting this together. And I want to thank Brad for his leadership on the board on this, and then the one thing, and I know, oh yeah, well, it's very nasty saying this, and he's just panted, but you know what? You know what's coming up in Albany? Mayor Control, right? And you know how many seats away I am from being the majority? Two seats. And we are going to be there in the majority when Mayor Control comes back up to be voted on the legislature, and you can bet that number one, and you can rest assured, or I promise you that number one, that we're going to ask them about is, where is the capacity? How are you going to make it so that our kids are not going to be crowded out of our public schools? And I also want to thank Class Size Matters, because I know you all have kids, and it's hard for you to take a day off and come up to Albany, and I am lonely when I'm there, but I want you to know that Class Size Matters has a presence there in twelve feet of snow, they come up there, and they fight to bring down class sizes and to be able to have the capacity of public schools, so I also, because you helped me with my loneliness, but also with my policy stuff, I want to thank Class Size Matters.
Thank you. Well, when I walked in here to see, and I said, is this a full community meeting? And they said, no, this is a committee meeting. Let me just say, I'm so happy to see so many parents and activists that have come out and ought to fight for your children. Because that's what you do. You're fighting for the future of your children. And if you don't stand up and fight, no one will. And that's what CFE was about from the beginning, standing up sometimes when the administration tells you that, no, you're wrong, when you know you're right, and you know that your children are overcrowded in classrooms, you stand up and say, I don't care what you say, you are wrong, and we are right. And we have to say it with that emotion and conviction, to physically fight, not physically, of course, fight whoever stands in your way, whether it's SCA, whether it's Joe Klein, whether it's Mayor Bloomberg, or anyone else. Because you have to do it. If you don't, then you take what they're giving you, and what they're giving you right now, it's not enough, it's unsatisfactory. They get enough, they get enough. And let me tell you, I'm going back to when the five-year plan came out, some of you were involved, Assemblymember was involved, and other people, and some of you are new parents. Well, let me tell you what I told them about District Six of Northern Manhattan, when they came out with that five-year capital plan. They said that District Six, now still one of the most overcrowded districts in the city, and if you don't know District Six, it's a one-thirty district all the way north, they said that you don't need any more school, because you're not going to be overcrowded by the year 2012. And I said, are you serious? Are you crazy? Do you live up there? Do you know what the conditions are? Wait a minute, your plan says all of the transportables in the yard are going to be gone. All of the K-3, you're only going to have now, instead of twenty-five, you're going to have twenty as a cap in K-3, and all of the classrooms that now were the AP's room, or, you know, whatever the closets you were, all of those are going to be transformed back to whatever they were. And the quality of education is going to be improved. I said, oh, huh? Okay, good. So if all of that happens, and the thousands of parents that are busing their children out because they're so overcrowded in Northern Manhattan, and the thousands of parents that are sending their children to private school, and the thousands of parents that are sending their children to Bronco School, when they come back, where are they going to go? Where are they going to go? There's no answer for that. But all of those things are going to improve the system. So I took up my coat at a PEP meeting, you know what PEP stands for, right? What does it stand for?
No, on educational policy.
No, it doesn't stand for that, it stands for rubber stamp, that's what it stands for. The PEP, administratively and black and white, stands for Panel for Educational Policy. And they sit up there, and they are the ones that set the policy, they don't set any policy, they are the rubber stamp of the Chancellor and Mayor Bloomberg, let's call it what it is. I took up my coat, and I said, do you see this coat here? If District Six is not overcrowded by the year 2012, I will spread this coat up and eat it over the course of a year. And I'm serious about that. But also, I said, the group that did the analysis, assuming that they did it right, is totally wrong, and they should be fired. Fired. Or, if they did the analysis right based on the information they received, then fire individuals who gave them wrong information. And quite frankly, and I'm very serious, but I'm not joking, they need to be fired, or the individuals that gave them the information, because they're all wrong. And you know, they say that, I saw on the screen there, and I have the fly here, they're only going to build, they're not going to build, they say they're projecting to build, projecting to build. And if you ask, if SCA was standing here right now, where I'm standing, and you asked this question, in the previous five-year capital plans, have you realized everything that's in the plan? You know what their answer is? No, they have not. And they're not going to realize everything that's in the five-year, this current five-year capital plan. So they project that you're going to X amount of seats? Well, you better fight like hell to make sure that that happens, because quite frankly... Because quite frankly, at the rate that they're going, it may not happen. And as you know, Mayor Bloomberg will not be in office. Quite frankly, let's be quite frank. So, I am glad you came out to fight, but you have to organize, organize, and organize. You have to write to your elected official, you have to come down to the hearings. And we're gonna be holding a hearing on the five-year capital plan amendment, hopefully in April. And let me tell you what one of the problems is. The problem is this. What happens if we don't deal with that separately? It winds up getting caught up in the entire city's budget process. And you know the entire city's budget is about $60 billion. And when it gets caught up in that process, it gets lost. And the main focus is on the entire budget, not on the amendment to the five-year capital plan. So, you have to push to make sure that that gets on the hearing, and that we in the city council deal with that separately. Legally and technically, we are supposed to approve the amendment to the five-year capital plan. The question is, what if we don't approve it? What will happen? Quite frankly, I don't know. Keen Burger, my sister, thank you. Let me just say, the fight continues every single day. And don't let anyone give you all this stuff that you don't know, pull a wool over your eyes, and try to divide you, because believe me, when you speak out and they don't like it, they will find something negative to say about you. They will try to divide and conquer you. Right now, you will organize under the leadership of your elected official and the community board, and stay that way in order to fight for your children's benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm glad that I could be here this evening. Mostly, my message is about supporting the community, which I'm a proud member of, and the fact that this is a great lesson that we're teaching our children. You don't stand by as an idol, you try and be smart and make strategic decisions and plan ahead. And I want our community to know that the administration and teachers support them, and having the city think about, how do we look at long-term, the involvement that's happening, and make sure that we have adequate spaces in all schools in our community. And I'm fortunate to work with one of the professionals like Mrs. Stigman and Kelly McGuire, who for us, it is about a team spirit effort. It's not about what's best for us individually, it's not every man or woman for himself, it's about what can we do together to support the families and make good creative decisions, because I know that we're smart people, to make sure we're addressing this issue. We love our communities, we will always do what's right by the children, regardless of what's set forth in front of us. But I think as witnessed tonight, the thing is, why not plan ahead so that we can make even better choices? So, it's not always a struggle to do the right thing by our children, but that we can actually safely say, "We move to a new year, we have a plan in place, and we know what's gonna come up in front of us." No one wants to be caught out of guard, we wanna be low-planned, and I just wanna work from my support to my amazing parent body, but also to the other schools in the neighborhood, who I know work so closely with myself, and with our parent body, to make sure that we are working as a community effort. And for me as a parent, I think the most wonderful thing about tonight is, so many people talk about how people don't get involved anymore, and tonight is such a prime example of the opportunity we're teaching our children, that you can be involved, you can make a difference, you need to be organized, you need to be creative, and you need to be steadfast. Don't stop trying and don't give up just because someone puts a roadblock in your way. And I've been fortunate to work with creative, amazing people who help support me in doing that. So, I wish all of you the best, and also know that as administrators, I think that we support, where do we go next? And let's do it in the smartest way possible, so thank you.
Kiana, but I'm Kelly McGuire, the principal of Brendan Fields Middle School. I've probably shouldn't have talked about doing right by the kids, so I'm gonna let my time go, and said that I was happy to be here and to listen to all the representatives and parents, and I'm gonna give my time to my students, who need to be back here tomorrow morning on time.
My name is Kiana, I'm in eighth grade at GVS.
My name is Destiny, I'm in eighth grade at GVS.
My name is Sabrina, I'm in seventh grade at GVS.
My name is Suki.
Space is one of our most important needs at GVS. During the school day, we don't stay in the same classroom, just learn all our subjects. From time to time, we often have to switch classes. But this time of year, it is very difficult, because the hallways are very crowded, and it's hard to create atmosphere.
GVS is a very small school. It's only occupied one floor that's right above PS3 and the fifth floor. Our school would like more activities such as a full computer room and more activities for sport. But we can't have that because of the limited space that we have.
Our students would like enough room to show our achievements, like math clubs, the basketball team, and much more in the future. GVS is a great school at the time, and would be much more if we had more space.
In addition, any other teachers have the shared classroom situation?
Can you see that?
Don't only listen to what we have to say, but make the changes we need for our school and make more.
Thank you.
All right, basically, you've heard the statistics, and we wanna get it out in front of the process that before the builders get their plans set in stone, we wanna be able to influence the process. So, that's basically, I just wanted to add my voice to that discussion, let's get out in front of the process before they actually have their plans made. Now, you can still influence what's happening.
Hi, I wanna say what an incredible thrill it is to be here. I started working on this issue, believe it or not, 11 years ago, when my daughter was in first grade in this very building at PS3. She had a first grade of 29, and now I have a son at PS41 in a class of 28, so you can see how much progress I've made over 11 years. But I'm doing a PowerPoint, is there some way for someone? Okay, I'm gonna be quick. Tell me if you can hear me. Okay, so, the CFE case, Robert Jackson was here. The court said, our state's highest court said that our kids were being denied their constitutional right to an adequate education because of overly large classes. And here are some quotes, you can read them if you like, I don't wanna go through them, but it says, "The class sizes are so outrageous, it's a systemic failure in our system, and unfortunately, nothing has changed since those words were written." There were panels that CFE got together to say, "What would be an adequate education? No more than 14 students per class in K-5, 22 in middle school, and 18 in high school." So, here we are. I took PS41 because the PS3 stats are mixed ages, so you can't really get them in the reporting. You can see where our class sizes are compared to citywide and the rest of the state. We have some of the highest class sizes here in District 2 and in downtown, especially at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level. You can see it's totally out of whack where my son is now. And citywide, it's still much higher than what it is in the rest of the state. But wait till you look at this. Middle school class sizes, I took Clinton, but all the middle schools in the downtown area have class sizes pretty much the same, above 30, which makes it not only some of the largest class sizes in the country, but some of the largest middle school class sizes in the entire industrialized world. Okay, the OECD countries. And then you see where it is citywide, which is still much bigger than the rest of the state, where a class size average is in all grades from 20 to 22. High school, I took the entire city, because our kids go to high school all over. This is where it gets really outrageous, and these averages don't even reflect the fact that almost half of all high school students are in classes of 31 and above. And you can see where it is in the rest of the state at about 20, 21. And this is not fair. This is simply unfair, it's unjust, it's a matter of social justice that our kids are getting shafted like this. The teaching load is also incredibly important. We have here in New York City, middle school and high school teachers have about twice the teaching load of any place else in the country. Correcting weekly written assignments, five minutes a week, and meeting with a student five minutes a week out of class would take an average teacher 37 extra hours a week, which is a whole second job, it's impossible, it simply doesn't happen. So, I think we got some wins up in Albany from a lot of hard work, from people like you, who sent faxes and letters. First, we got a lot of money for school construction. We got 1.8 billion outright in cash, which almost never happens. And they authored us another $9 billion, where they were gonna pay half of the financing. On top of that, we got a higher reimbursement rate for every dollar we spend on school construction in New York City. They pay for half of it on top of that. And what did the DOE do? They cut the number of seats in the capital plan by 3,000. This is the number of seats that have been created under the Bloomberg administration. You can see how dreadful it is, the start of the five-year capital plan that Bloomberg says is the most ambitious ever, and how great it is. You can see how incredibly low the number of seats have been. And the blue ones at the bottom are classroom conversions, which I'm always very suspicious of, because I know what they're taking away when they're putting in classrooms. They're taking away important programs in our schools. Projected seats in schools versus stadiums over the next five, four years? This is a mayor that came into office and said he was gonna build schools, not stadiums, and look what happened. Twice as many seats in stadiums planned than in schools. 120,000 in stadiums compared to 63,000 in schools. What happened last spring? We got the CFE suit settled in terms of operating aid, bringing our schools more than $5 billion over the next four years. As part of this, and it was a very hard-fought battle, the administration opposed us tooth and nail, it was the very last thing to get passed in the state budget, and it made the state budget go over the deadline, which I can tell you the new governor, Spitzer, was not too happy about. But they passed a law that said that New York City, in exchange for getting all this new money, had to submit a five-year plan to reduce class sizes in all grades. And that the capital plan be aligned with this plan, so that they actually provide the space for it. And I'm proud of that second one, because I got that in there. So, this is how much money's supposed to come to our schools over the next five years. You can see, the bottom portion is the state aid, the upper portion is what the city's supposed to provide for our schools, and it really is a lot of money, and it could create a lot of smaller classes. So, what has the city done to comply with the new state law? Almost nothing. They did finally submit, after four months of arguing with SED, the State Education Department, they did submit a five-year plan, saying they're gonna bring down averages citywide to no more than 20 in K-3 and 23 in the rest of the grades. But they haven't actually told any school to actually reduce class sizes, because they say they're leaving it up to principals. They haven't revised the capital plan, and the capital plan only has room in it for smaller classes in K-3, and only through enrollment decline. And we have estimates that the CFE consultants did, would take about 120,000 seats to be able to reduce class sizes citywide, which is double the number of seats in the plan. Now, what's happened over the long run? The city controller way back when, 10 years ago, found that New York City schools were the neediest part of our infrastructure. Since then, the capital spending on schools has steadily shrunk in terms of their share of overall capital spending, and is at least a 20-year low right now. In absolute terms, the city fund spend on school construction is lower than the last year of the Giuliani administration. And this is also despite the fact that we get higher reimbursement rates, and of course, school construction costs have gone up. Here's a very interesting chart that I got out of the Office of Managing Budget, but you can see those black at the bottom is what the city's spending on capital construction for schools and repair. And you can see how the proportion of spending that's going of city funds into this is lower than it's ever been, probably in the city's history, but certainly in the last 20 years. That's not it, I think I just hit, okay. And despite the fact that the mayor says this is the most ambitious plan ever, it's not particularly ambitious, they're creating twice as many seats in LA, they're creating quite a bit more in Miami. And because of that, in Florida, they have a statewide mandate, constitutional amendment to reduce class sizes in all grades. In the last three years, Miami has reduced class sizes by nine kids per class in K-3, seven students per class in 4-8, and almost two in high school. Is this the most ambitious in the city's history? No. I just was reading a piece that Diane Ravitch wrote for the Public Advocate Governance Commission. They created 100,000 school seats in three years, in the turn of the century, and nearly half a million during the 1920s. How much would it cost to actually provide that doubling of seats? We figured out that it would take about $275 million for annual financing, $138 million after 50% reimbursement, which is only 3% of last year's city surplus, and only 1/7 of what the mayor gave back in tax cuts last year. Now, we're not facing a surplus, unfortunately, this year again, but the mayor still wants to give us back $1.25 billion in property tax rebates and cuts. One tenth of that money, one tenth of that money, could double the number of seats in the capital plan. So, what about here in District 2? We are 99% utilization throughout the district, our middle schools and high schools are at 83%, but this is really an underestimate of how severe the problem is. And those numbers assume maximum class sizes in most of the grades, 28 in 4-8, and 34 in high school. And we know, we've heard over and over, that the school age population is rising, and we have no new schools in this neighborhood, no high schools. No high schools in the capital plan for the entire borough of Manhattan. And according to the Department of Education, our biggest problem is to find sites. And we know that there are sites out there, we just don't think they're looking hard enough, but we're gonna find them for them. St. Vincent's, the development, we want rooms in elementary school. Pier 40 is a perfect, perfect opportunity. For middle school and/or high school, we have all these sports fields, they don't get used during the day, during the week. This is a perfect synergy for a school on the pier, one or two schools even. Despite the fact that some people on the Hudson River Park trust, do not think a public school is a public use, we have to convince them otherwise. They're closing parochial schools, we know that. When 9/11 happened, they found room for 234 on West 14th Street in two weeks. We could have leased that school, and that could be a public school right now. And there are other possibilities online. And this is what the mayor said a couple weeks ago on his radio show. I wanted to see that everyone heard it. There's never going to be enough schools. Why? The funny thing is, everybody wants more schools, but when you try to cite them in their neighborhoods, well, I beg to differ. Here we are, a community, we're begging for new schools in our neighborhood. We're begging SCA, we're begging our elected officials, we're begging everybody. It's not NIMBY, but WIMBY or WYABY. I got this from Chris McGinnis, who's here. We want it in our backyard, and the only question is, do we have the community and the political will to achieve this? One more thing I wanted to announce, we are putting together a Manhattan Task Force on School Overcrowding that is being hosted by the Manhattan Borough President. Our first meeting is January, the end of the month, January 31st, and we're interested in having people come who really wanna solve this problem. And I think that we really wanna have legislative and policy solutions that are gonna solve it, not just for Manhattan, but citywide. So, thank you very much, this is a great thrill for me.
Hi, I'm Jessie, and overcrowding classrooms are frustrating, with all the noise, it's hard to concentrate. Many times, I don't get my questions answered or the individual attention I need, because the teacher has many other students to deal with. This has a direct effect on my grades and education.
Okay, I'm Abby, and I'm in seventh grade. And I have 33 kids in my class, so if I have a question for the teacher, and it's just about something that I'm doing, a lot of times, it won't get it, it's gonna lower my grade. And that's really bad, because in seventh grade, you need really good grades, because of high school and stuff. So, class size really affects a lot. So class size really affects a lot, and I'm just, oh, there's me.
My name is Kelly, and I'm in third grade. I'm sitting in the other school. Don't worry about P S three. I really don't want to take away any of the schools that are getting rooms because the special subjects are my favorite. They're my favorite because we get to do projects that we can never do in our regular room. If we didn't have these subjects, it would just mean that we would stay in the classroom all day doing other stuff, which is absolutely unacceptable. I just can't imagine school without those subjects.
Most of what I was going to say has been said already, probably more eloquently than I could have ever said it. I just want to thank you all for coming out and for listening to all of this. I want to thank you all for coming out and supporting, for sticking through to all the bitter end. And I want to say that I don't see any reason why we should expect our schools to be anything less spectacular. I don't think that anybody should be able to give us rationalizations for why they should be. They can't be spectacular. And I think that the people who work in all your local schools, and I know them, and we work in slightly different ways, but in very kindred spirit, I think that we're all working incredibly hard, and we'll continue to do that. The teachers, with the cooperation and participation and assistance of parents, community members, will continue, no matter what happens, to work as hard as we can to give the best possible education to your children because they're terrific. You see them. We enjoy them. But I just think it's really important not to believe that the schools cannot be spectacular, and to do everything possible to make them that way, and not to have your expectations diminished. I think that just on a very practical manner, the infrastructure situation that Chino talked about is particularly difficult in this building. If anybody feels ambitious at the end of this meeting, you can walk down to the basement or you can find a cafeteria which seats 175 students legally, or can hold 175 equally, which is students and adults. I think that Kelly McGuire, I mean, Kelly's still here, and I work really well together to try and cooperate and meet the needs of all the students in the building. But I think that when you're calculating what a building can hold, you have to look at all the parts of it. You can't just focus on above the waist or one leg. You have to look at the totality. And I think that that's something that we've been told doesn't count, but it really does. I think when you listen to the kids speak about their lives in the school, you understand what's important to them. When you think about your life as an adult, you understand that things don't exist in isolation. It's the totality that comes together to make an experience. Thank you very much, Chino.
If you could say, no, I'm sorry to have you on this list, but thank you.
Susan Carson.
Thank you, Susan.
Good evening. My name is Susan Carson. As a young, single woman, I moved to Lincoln Town Street in 1986. In 1998, I got married and started a family. I now live in the same cozy closet with my husband, two boys, seven and nine years old. Why may you ask, do we stay in the West Village? Schools, and it is the West Village. Name me P S forty-one, our neighborhood school. I want my kids to go to a school that is similar to my elementary school experience in suburban Connecticut, my husband's in Virginia. Warm, welcoming, intimate, where everyone knows your name. My older son entered kindergarten in 2004. It was clear in preschool that he had some learning issues. We were assured that with a continued intervention and support services, he would be fine in a normal school. Unfortunately, in the first grade, my learning disabled child was not taken care of. He and many kids in his class basically lost a year of school. For an ADHD child, this meant a lot of lost time and a lot of hard work in the future to catch up. We managed to get our son into the CTT class, a wonderful program that combines novel students for kids who have some learning issues. My son worked really hard, and it was clear that he had lost a lot of ground and might benefit from self-contained classroom, a twelve-bedroom classroom.